Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council April Planning, uh, April Council Meeting, not Planning Commission. But we will move into our meeting agenda now and I'll call the meeting to order. And tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Chaplain Tim York from the Smyrna Police Department. And our pledge is going to be done by Fran Dunn, the Executive Director of the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for your handiwork and how you work among us. Lord, we're thankful for our city. Thank you, Lord, that we're able to participate as a community in helping others. Help us to always listen for your wisdom. Father, help all of us to accept your guidance and follow you because you are our shepherd. We pray that you would bless this meeting tonight with your presence. And Lord, we ask you that our city may be a shining light in this world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim and Fran. Um, we'll move into our agenda and Amber, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Here.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 regular meeting and the March 28th, 2024 workshop meeting of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as to form, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have any additions or corrections for the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I will move on to item four, which is correspondence and communications. Brian, are there ever any correspondence or communication?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to awards and recognitions. Tonight, we have a recognition of Senior Citizens Day proclamation. Ms. Amber?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas older citizens bring to our community their knowledge, their breadth of insight, their talents, their wisdom, and their life experiences. And whereas our older population is a productive, active, and vital contributor to our thriving community. And whereas the town of Smyrna is dedicated to ensuring our community is a place in which our population can mature as they grow older and offer to our older citizens a place to thrive and participate to the fullest within the community. And whereas the town of Smyrna, through a U.S. News and Forbes Magazine national survey, has been declared one of the nation's most desirable places to retire. And whereas the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna, a nonprofit organization formed in 1971, currently serves almost 700 members for recreational, physical, educational, and social activities, as well as travel opportunities. And whereas the month of May has traditionally been celebrated as a time to honor our older citizens through ceremonies, events, fairs, and other activities at the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna and other locations. And with the support of the town of Smyrna, the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna will organize and hold annually a Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna. And whereas the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna ended the year 2023 with the largest increase in new members and has embarked on a capital campaign to build a new center on almost six acres of land leased to the center by the town of Smyrna. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 53rd anniversary of the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna being dedicated to the support and well-being of the senior popula- population in Smyrna. Now therefore, I'm Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the Town of Smyrna, on behalf of the town council, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2024 as the 8th Annual Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna, Tennessee, and encourage all Smyrna citizens to join us in this worthy observance. Proclaim this the 9th day of April, 2024.
Thank you, Amber. You know, um, I will tell you that the center's been around for 53 years now. And, um, my entire life, activities have been taking place there for the entire community, not just for the seniors. And what a vital part of the community that the center plays. I mean, I remember the cakewalks and the garage sales and, um, and all the things that Patsy had a lot to do with. And, um, you all are continuing that for our community. And, um, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. We have a very active senior population. I'll be honest, I'm surprised some of you are here tonight because of jet lag. So, um, uh, they've just gotten back from a, a, a huge, a huge trip. So I'll let you tell a little bit about that. But, um, so we just want to say thank you. It's hard to believe we've been doing this for eight years now. Time flies. But, um, we'd love for you all to come up, all of you to come up and, um, receive the proclamation. Then tell us a little bit about what you got going on. We'll let Ms. Catherine get her picture for us. So y'all come on up. Thank you. Well, before everybody gets away, I'll let everybody introduce themselves. And if there's anything you want to tell us, so.
I'm Marion Appleton.
Patsy Brown.
Ronald Woody.
Cheryl Black.
I'll let you be the last.
Cherry Keepers.
Deborah Woody.
Jackie Vaughn.
I'm Mary Lou Thomas, and I'm the mother of our illustrious Councilman H.G. Cole.
Natty Sims, and I'm not illustrious anymore.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so thank you all so much for being here tonight. I think Fran's going to talk a little bit from the podium, and we appreciate you all.
Ronald, before she starts, I want to know what you're going to do with all these ladies tonight when you leave here.
I don't know what they're doing. I'm going home and going to sleep. You know, I'm one of the people that the mayor was referring to that she surprised were here because I am definitely jet lagged because we returned home late last night from our 11-day Rhine River cruise where we hit Germany, the Netherlands, France, and Switzerland. And it was absolutely amazing. So we're the place to come and be involved if you want to go on trips like this.
And those countries will never be the same.
Anyway, Mayor Reed and council members, I stand before you today, and even though it's the 8th annual, it's really the 9th year that we have done this proclamation. So we are so grateful to you on behalf of the members for your recognition of our center and for the senior population in Smyrna. There aren't many days that pass by that I don't say I love my job and what I do, and I love these people. I love being a part of an organization that provides opportunities for the seniors in our community, to educate, engage, and enhance their lives, whether it be activities and programs that take place at the center, being a part of community events, day trips, and overnight trips, or just being a resource of information for the seniors in our community. As mentioned in the proclamation, the month of May is proclaimed nationwide as Older Americans Month. The theme for 2024 is powered by connection, which recognizes the profound impact that meaningful relationships and social connections have on our health and well-being. And that's exactly what our center provides, meaningful relationships and social connections. We kick off this celebration with our annual open house and outdoor expo on May the 1st at the center from 11 to 1. We showcase all of our activities and programs inside our building, while many of our vendors are set up in our parking lot to offer useful information to the senior community. And everyone is invited to attend. On Tuesday, May 14th, we will once again honor our members at our Older Americans Luncheon at the Event Center. Then coming up, even before all of those activities happen, the mayor mentioned garage sales. April 25th, 26th, and 27th is, as we claim, North Rutherford County's largest indoor yard sale. Um, this is our second-largest fundraiser of the year. Last year, we raised over $15,000. So we anticipate this year to be larger, and we're excited about it. People are like, when can we start bringing stuff? Well, next Monday is the day. If you've never been, you should come and just browse through and see how clean and organized it is. At our monthly meeting today, is, it was announced that we currently have 711 members. Our numbers just continue to grow, and we're excited that so many of our new members are becoming very active at the center. Needless to say, we continue to bust at the seams, and the need for a larger space increases daily. Last year, when I gave these remarks, I mentioned that we were embarking on our capital campaign and said to you, if the town of Smyrna happens to have five or so acres laying around that you'd like to share with us, we would be most grateful. Well, you came through for us, and we just want to say thank you so much. Um, we're excited about the six acres of land on the corner of Sam Ridley and Mason Tucker. And as much as I want to turn that first shovel of dirt today, Brian, we need to raise a little more money before we can do that. Our Capital Campaign Committee has been formed under the leadership of co-chairs Steve Steele and Patsy Brown. Within the next few weeks, we'll be reaching out to our top potential donors to get their financial commitment in writing. For anyone who's interested in more information about our center, any of you who are old enough to join, if you need an application, um, you know, we can help you with that. If you want more information about our capital campaign, building on the legacy, because we have a 53-year-old legacy, please come visit us at 100 Wraith Street behind the Smyrna Library. We're open Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 4:00, getting closer to being open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:00. But we're not quite there, but we're almost there. Um, you only have to be 55 years old, and membership dues are still only a mere $35. And if, if you all can afford it, we have a scholarship fund. The Senior Activity Center is an integral part of this community. We're proud and grateful to serve the senior population and in Smyrna and surrounding areas. We could not have grown to achieve the many successes we've had without the support of the town, local businesses, churches, our members, and especially to Patsy. Thank you.
Fran, thank you so much. And thank you for all that you do on a daily basis for the senior center. We appreciate you. And, um, you all are an active bunch. I see y'all on Facebook, everything that you all are doing. So, um, council, anything you want to add? Okay, you all are welcome to stay for the entire meeting. We would love to have you. But if there's something you need to go home and do, and even if it's just sleep, we understand. And, um, but you're welcome anytime. So, so, um, we will move into our consent agenda. And our consent items are items that don't necessarily need to be discussed individually. I do like to read each one of these items so that those in the audience, as well as those at home, know exactly what we're voting on. Counsel, if there's an item you want to pull off and discuss or vote on individually, we can do that as well. So our consent agenda tonight, our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Incorporated relative to the, to the design of Phase 1 of the Stewart's Creek sewer expansion. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Incorporated relative to the design of Phase 2 of the Stewart's Creek sewer expansion. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Beach Construction Services for the construction of tennis and pickleball courts at Cedarstone Park. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Communications to extend the town fiber network to the new Jefferson Pike Fire Hall. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Safe Industries for the fire department apparatus servicing. And item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amendment to the original June 15th agreement with Dray Pack Investments LLC. Counsel, is there anything you have questions about, or you want to pull off and vote on separately? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business. We only have one item that is under old business that is a public hearing tonight. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 55, parcels 4.01 and 5.02, to go from R3 to C4. It's requested by Sammy Said. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately eight tenths of an acre and are located at 6070 and 6092 Seminary Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, these are two tracts of land that are located side by side of one another. Uh, at Seminary Road and Poplar Wood Road intersection, land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, C2, and I2 in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Uh, there is an existing house on one of these parcels that staff understand they want to take that house and convert it into a, a commercial use. Initially, looking at a dentist's office, but this would allow for all uses within C4. Uh, sewer would be required to be extended from the intersection of Valuable Road and Seminary Road to the adjoining property lines. Uh, and also converting this residence to a commercial use will require some of the site plan and building plans to meet all requirements of the town and the building code. Uh, planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion about this in our previous meetings. No questions? Then, at this time, we'll go to the public to ask if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move, uh, to new business. Under the Planning Commission report, um, we have four items tonight. The first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, part of parcel 58.00, to amend the approved PRD requested by Matt Huff. The property requested to be rezoned contains 18.93 acres and is located west of Fortitude Trail. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request to amend and approve PRD, uh, west, kind of west of the street called Fortitude Trail and north of the Woodmont Development. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which is the Woodmont and Colony Estates at Green Tree, the PRDs. Uh, the existing approved PRD is for 70 single-family lots. Uh, the request of amendment would remove 4.2 acres from this PRD and reduce the total number of lots to 60. Uh, this does increase the density of the development from, uh, 3.03 houses per acre at 3.17. Um, there is a change in the proposed amenities from a pickleball court to a playground. All other aspects of the approved PRD do remain the same. Uh, this request and the request from, uh, Rob Mulchan are in tandem with one another and would result in a better overall road layout for the area. As a cul-de-sac within Burnett Ridge, which is what this was, uh, called, uh, would connect to the north and create additional avenues for ingress and egress. Uh, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, 7, 4, 0 against. Staff would also recommend approval.
Mark or Tim, anything you want to add or talk about?
I think one of the major things to, that we considered is just the better connectivity. So, you know, better ingress, egress, to and from. So when you see this in conjunction with what's next, it's just a better layout overall.
Counsel, questions or comments?
Kevin, what are the densities of this in comparison to the surrounding, such as even Colony Estates that's coming in also?
Yeah, this was, as I said, it goes from 3.03 to 3.17. Uh, Colony Estates, if it's approved as submitted, is about 2.99.
3.99?
2.9, 2.99, I'm sorry. Uh, the Woodmont Development down there, I did look at that. Um, it's about 3.67. Um, and then Summer Ridge and, which is next to Colony Estates, uh, that's the Summer Ridge and Mountain Brook. And then the Green Tree Developments, those are all R3, which is a 10,000 square foot minimum. Usually, it's between 2 and 1/2 to 3 per acre is usually what happens within R3. So it's in the, in the ballpark of what's around it.
Other questions?
Um, strip of land immediately, I guess I'd get my questions out even for Colony Estates. What is that strip of land between Colony Estates and Village is going to end up being?
That's a, it's currently zoned R3. Um, I, it's a, it's a piece of properties that could eventually be developed, um, so obviously, because it, you could have, that's the last missing piece where you would have the connection of Skinner Drive. So both ends of Skinner Drive can be connected. Uh, beyond that, I don't know. I've not had any develop, discussions with anybody about developing that piece of property.
And the outlined pieces there are just green areas that are?
Yes. Yeah, the, the areas that aren't in lots are common, common open space. They'll be usable open space, or there'll be detention ponds or, or whatever there.
And HOA will keep them on?
Maintenance on all those, yes.
Other questions? Okay. Um, hearing no other questions, do I have a motion?
I will move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 2 is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, parcel 58.01, and part of parcel 58.00 to amend the approved PRD requested by Rob Mulchan. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately 37.68 acres and are located on Ryan Hill Drive.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this request is directly north of what you, the request you just looked at, and would, and would connect the two together. Um, they are, land use plan would support, again, medium-density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is R1, R3, and PRD, which are the Burnett Ridge, uh, which is, which we looked at. And then, uh, eventually would connect to also the Woodmont, uh, PRD. Uh, existing approved PRD is for 11 single-family lots. Uh, this request of amendment would add 4.2 acres from the adjoining PRD, uh, which is the area on the map that's kind of highlighted, that triangular area, uh, in, highlighted in black there. Um, but add the 4.2 acres and would allow for 113 single-family lots, which would increase the density from, uh, .33 houses per acre to 2.99. Uh, the houses would have a minimum of 1,600 square feet living area, would be finished with a mix of brick, stone, and concrete siding, have two-car garages. Uh, all requirements of the town regarding open space, parking, and setbacks would be met. Uh, this would extend Ryan Hill Drive, uh, through the site to connect to Burnett Ridge. Uh, and there would also be an extension of Skinner Drive through the site, and would also be a connection to Millgate Drive, which is in the Woodmont Development. The planning commission did, uh, review this, did recommend approval, 6, 4, 1 against. Staff would recommend approval.
And Kevin, refresh my memory, what was it different in regards to the ingress, egress before?
Well, this one has had a couple of different iterations. Uh, the most recent iteration, basically, there was not going to be any ingress and egress at all. You would have, there'd be a cul-de-sac at Ryan Hill Drive with about seven or eight large estate-type lots. And then Skinner Drive on the far west, kind of southwestern corner was going to have a cul-de-sac with, I think, like, three lots on it.
Okay.
So that was basically it. And then I could say that triangular area was basically going to be a cul-de-sac within the Burnett Ridge Development.
Okay.
Now, before that, this, not the far, the eastern kind of rectangular area of this was not included, but there was actually a Colony Estates at Green Tree that had about 77 lots on it that was going to connect Skinner Drive as well as Ryan Hill into, actually was going to connect into Woodmont at that time.
Okay.
But that went away when the, the, the large estate lot development came through.
Okay. Other questions for Kevin on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item 3, which is consideration of rezoning requested to amend the PID on property located on Tax Map 35, parcel 92.02, requested by Sean Saunders. The property requested to be amended contains 3.23 acres and is located at 7085 Florence Road. Kevin?
Yes, this is a request to amend, uh, another PUD amendment, a planned industrial development amendment. Uh, it's 7085 Florence Road. It's about 450 feet north of the intersection with Bridgewater Drive. Uh, this again is a medium-density, single-family residential development, uh, kind of policy area for this area from the land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix, is a mix of R1, R3, and I2. Uh, this approved, uh, PID is for six separate mini-storage buildings totaling 49,410 square feet. Uh, the buildings were required to be constructed with brick, stone, or concrete siding on the ends of the five buildings that do face Florence Road. Uh, the elevation submitted, that was in the PUD, the, the site plan, uh, did limit that a little further to just show brick or stone on the ends of those buildings. Uh, this site plan was approved in February of 2021 and then re-approved in December of 2022, uh, due to that expiration of the original approval. And the same elevations were approved both times. Uh, the buildings were actually constructed with split-faced concrete block on the ends of the buildings instead of the brick or stone. Uh, the developer has requested that this PUD be amended to allow for this to remain. Uh, the planning commission did review this, did recommend denial unanimously. Staff would also recommend denial.
Mark or Tim, anything you want to add to this?
You know, this is one of those tough ones that you have with a planning commission because, you know, you know the person that's involved, and you know, uh, the quality of that person and, you know, his family. But, in fairness and with consistency, you know, we've had several, uh, similar-type projects where this was required. And it's required by ordinance, even regardless above that. We've actually had one building I can think of that we required brick, stone, uh, I can't remember if it was cement, but the gentleman came in and did all metal. And we asked him to correct this. This was originally zoned, it was an R1 zoning. Uh, when it was first approved and it was moved to a PID, it was because of it being similar to what was across the street to allow that. But, you know, in keeping with the neighborhoods that's grown, grown up around it, and wanting to have just the better overall look and to meet design review, we required it. And it was included in our approval, and it was included on the site plan. And quite frankly, I, I think it was just missed. It was a mistake, and I hate that. Um, but that ultimately led to the 7-0 vote to deny it at, uh, planning.
Okay. Uh, council, any comments or questions?
I'll just, uh, tell you guys thanks. I know it's a tough one when it is somebody you know. Um, I've, I had my camper there at Sean's facility for a while.
I had my camper there at Sean's facility for a while, but in this case, the precedent is really what you have to be most concerned about, and although it's a simple mistake or an easy mistake to make, if we allow this one to continue to stay, then going forward, anybody could just make a mistake and get what they want or get something cheaper if they were trying to do it intentionally, right? And so we kind of have to be, we have to be consistent, and I think this is just one of those cases where consistency is hard to do.
Well, and to be fair, he had his contractor here for planning, got up and spoke for a few minutes, and Mr. Sanders too, they all admit, we made the mistake. This isn't anything planning or anybody else did. We made the mistake, and if we have to fix it, we'll fix it. So I appreciate the spirit of cooperation and understanding that, but they did miss it. Contractor admitted to that, he said, I messed up, so.
Other comments or questions?
This doesn't have to do with it. Did we require a buffer between that and the homes?
We did, yeah, on all three sides.
Looking at, yeah, we did, I just wonder, did it get, it's been done?
Other comments or questions?
Well, you know, it's tough enough with industrial up against residential. Of course, across the street, the industrial was already there, and that's kind of where this one gets the end on it. But, you know, this was a, like a late coming as industrial, and the residential was already there around it, so, I mean, how, we bend and we bend and, you know. It's a matter of following the rules. Like everybody said, this is tough, because Sean's a friend and has been a friend for a long time, but I mean, you can only go so far with that.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I want to make a motion to deny based on not meeting the approved site plan.
So we have a motion to deny based on not meeting the approved site plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes for denial. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements by negotiation or condemnation for the purpose of carrying out the Rock Springs Road sidewalk project. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, as you all are aware, the town is preparing to obtain easements for the installation of a sidewalk along Rock Springs Road from Division Street to Mason Tucker Drive. I did attach those plans that have been submitted to this point for that. The planning commission did review this, did find it consistent with our comprehensive plan, and did recommend approval unanimously. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on the sidewalk going from Front Street to Mason Tucker down Rock Springs?
The sidewalk in front of that new development is being covered by the developer, right?
That's correct.
Questions on this about the acquisition of easements? Then do we have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business, item B, which is consideration of a resolution to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with National Buy Board. Rex, how are you?
Hello, Mayor and Counsel? Doing fine. This resolution allows the town to enter into the National Purchasing Cooperative by executing the interlocal agreement pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated twelve dash three dash twelve oh five. The contracts with National Buy Board are competitively solicited, evaluated, and awarded. The interlocal agreement will save time and money relative to the purchase of police uniforms as well as other items. The staff recommends approval of the resolution and the interlocal participation agreement.
Question to Rex on this? Okay, then do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks Rex. Brian, anything under other?
No ma'am.
Okay, then we will move on to status reports. Rex, you didn't get to sit down for very long.
I didn't rest much. February state share tax, we received six hundred and thirty-eight thousand and eighty-six dollars. February local sales tax, we received one million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Our actual collections are above what they were last year at this time, and taxes are close to budget.
Questions for Rex on this?
No, I just, you know, it still concerns me a little bit to see those red numbers, but I know overall we're trending up, so it's fine, but.
I agree.
We didn't see any of those negative numbers for many years, and I think it's just a, this is how negative economy impacts us, right? Overall, we're still staying above the budget plan, but there's still, there's still some dips.
Well, state forecast was for to kind of level off, and we can kind of see that from what you're saying.
But I think what HG preaches every, every meeting is so important of shopping local. I mean, it makes such a huge difference. We really saw that at the budget retreat yesterday, yesterday? Yes, yesterday. I know, it was such a long day, but, so.
We all sort of felt like Fran getting off that jet yesterday.
Yes, a little bit jet lagged after. But with that being our largest revenue stream with sales tax, it's a huge, huge piece for our budget, so.
And it's what, you know, helps us to maintain a low property tax rate.
Right. Well, and looking at that property tax rate, when we were looking at all the municipalities in Rutherford County, that the only one that has a lower property tax rate than we do is Eagle. So I think that speaks well to Rex and his team as well as Brian and all the, all the employees, so.
You know, Rex, you said something yesterday, and I meant to ask you to clarify on that, but most other communities' property tax is their driving force and not necessarily the sales tax, is that correct? Good job citizens of Smyrna, shop local.
Well, I was glad to hear Brian say yesterday at the beginning of the budget retreat. Do you want to tell them whatever you told us that, about taxes?
Current budget that we proposed to you has no tax increase associated with it.
So that says a lot about, I think, you know, I hate to get on soapbox, but just for a minute, I think I will. For a long time now, we've been pretty solvent community. We've got a great bond rating, we borrow money cheap, and HG does a good job reminding everybody to shop local, and we appreciate that they do. We understand that we're in an inflationary period right now. You go buy groceries or buy a meal, and it's not as cheap as it used to be, and I think that has a lot to do with what we're seeing in reflection of our taxes here. But I for one, just commend everybody that I get to work with here that really focuses on this, this effort all the time to keep the tax burden off of the taxpayer. And Rex, if you will, you know, yesterday you said something that I asked you to clarify again at the budget retreat. Yes, we have growth. Growth is coming, we're not, we can't, you don't lock the doors, they kind of look all around us, north, south, east, or west, it's all middle Tennessee, it's not just us. But in the discussion that we had about impact fees, which as a real estate professional, I still support, I always have, I think if you look at my history up here, I've always said impact fees are a necessity, and we are charging one hundred percent of what we are allowed to do on impact fees. But you made a comment yesterday that fifteen cents is collected through impact fees that would normally be placed on the burden of the taxpayer. So I found that to be quite interesting, the fact that impact fees does a lot for our parks, our police, our sidewalks, our fire department, all benefit from the fact that we're collecting those fees. So, yes, sometimes growth isn't always favorable, but I truly believe that this body has done the best job that they can, and we're seeing the fruits of that now, being as solvent as we are. Our general fund is strong, so we are sitting in a position that we do not have to go to the taxpayer to ask for funding to do certain jobs. Plus, we can pay cash, and we can borrow cheap. So that's, that's a kudo to this body up here, and I think, I'm not bragging here, and I'm not tooting my own horn, but I think the public, the general public out there may not understand the job that's being done, and I just think it's important once in a while that we remind them, because we do get beat up a little bit, we understand that. We're in leadership here. Leadership's not easy, y'all, and, you know, sometimes taxpayers don't understand that, but we want them to. We want them to know that we're from here too, that we live in the traffic too, that we shop in the stores too. Our kids go to school here too. And so I just want to be reminding people of that as they sometimes want to focus on the negativity of their leadership once in a while, and we're going to sit up here, we're going to do the very best job we can and not hear the noise, so to speak, and continue to focus on our taxpayer. So I just wanted to get that out.
Well, I'm excited about Rex's presentation, that'll happen in two weeks. That's going to talk about the budget, talk about where we are financially, but also talk about, I think you all are going to be amazed at the number of projects that we're going to be doing over the next couple of years, but especially what's budgeted for next year in regards to infrastructure and, it is exciting, it is exciting, so.
You know, I want to talk about that for a second, because it's, you know, we go through all that yesterday, and one thing we do is look at what's coming, but we look at what has been accomplished and then what is in a continuation state, and I think it's very commendable to the town employees, the staff, all the way down to the, to the, to the general workers themselves, that they get all this stuff done, and then, you know, to look at what's coming up next year is like, you know, don't slow down, it's still, you know, it's still happening. So I want to say, you know, heartfelt thanks to all of the town employees that do these things, that put the money to work, let's put it that way.
Well, I encourage all of you at our workshop to, either whether it's in person or online, to watch what's going, coming up in the next budget year. Rex puts a lot of time into that presentation, and I hope the citizens will take the time to tune in.
And you know, Mayor, may I, just real quick, the budget retreat we sat in yesterday, how long were we there? All day.
Almost twelve hours, eleven hours?
It was a full day, but I would welcome the public, because it is open to the public, and I would welcome the public to come sit in that budget retreat and learn the real interactions of what it takes to run a government, and what a great job our team does. Our directors are top-notch people, our leadership are top-notch people, and every employee that works at this town is invested in making this town the best it can be. So from your seat, if you don't understand how a town operates, come to see that, come to the budget retreats, and get to know the inner workings of what is involved with government and how much money it takes, and then understand how we're not having to come to you for more money. Just leave that there.
Okay. Thanks Rex. Announcements, Amber?
None for me.
Brian D?
Well, Mayor and Counsel, I do have a couple of things I wanted to share with you tonight. Funny, the first thing on my list was the budget retreat, I just wanted to, I want to thank the council for spending the day with us yesterday and hearing the ideas and the things we've been able to put together. I want to thank the directors for all the work that they've done to make this budget happen. Mark, as you said, a lot of work goes into this. What you saw yesterday in a ten and a half, eleven hour, you know, presentation is about two and a half months' worth of work by each of these department heads, by the finance department, and I really want to give a shout out to Rex and Sierra, and then Casey Conard and Amber here that, to my right, they do a lot of work putting the presentation together, getting everything prepared for us, and I felt like we brought as good a budget as possible to you yesterday. I know we've got a couple of small tweaks to make between now and the workshop, but I don't think there's anything major that came out of the budget retreat that was asked for to be changed or anything, so we thank you so much for that. Did want to mention, Mike Moss shared this with Rex and I today, and then I also heard it today at a luncheon I was at. Some of you may know Corey Hall, that works for Thomas and Hunter, they've done a lot of work for us. His mother passed away last night unexpectedly, and I just wanted to recognize that family. Also, on a personal note, a friend of mine that's been a friend for over fifty years that lives here in Smyrna, Don Thomas, he's part of my Wednesday morning, you know, I have that little Wednesday morning group of old high school buddies that get together. His father passed away last night, and they'll be dealing with that funeral over the weekend, and I just want to remember the Thomas family here in Smyrna in our prayers. From time to time, I get something sent to me from either the police or the fire department or from a citizen that talks about one of our employees, and I just could not resist sharing this one with you tonight. This came from, one of our telecommunicators was sent up to the chief, and chief sent it to me, said dispatch had a call from a citizen to praise one of our officers who pulled him over with a friend at a traffic stop last night. You got to be doing something really good to get somebody that you just gave a ticket to compliment you, so. Officer Fisher, badge number one, 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 one. The citizen wanted to compliment Officer Fisher on how he conducted the traffic stop. The citizen said Officer Fisher was respectful, polite, and did not try to intimidate him. So Officer Fisher, thank you for representing the brand whenever this, this traffic stop was. I hope we get some more of those, people that are happy with our, our police officers for the work they do, so, thank you. Couple of slides that I have that I want to share with you. Smyrna Parks and Recreation has seasonal and part-time positions available. We have a great team and invite you to consider joining the Parks team. You can go on our website or governmentjobs.com, and you can find those opportunities, we still have a few spots to fill. Speaking of our police department, congratulations to the Smyrna Police Officers Zach Chapman, Tim Russell, and David Morales on their recent Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy graduation. Welcome to the Smyrna Police Department. I know we've had this out on Facebook as we always do to recognize these folks, and we'll soon be having a penning ceremony and have these folks fully inducted as police officers on the street for the town of Smyrna, and we do appreciate what they do. Next, this morning, the chief and myself and Assistant Chief Lear, Chief Irvin, I should say, had the opportunity, and also one of our officers, Jonathan Beverly, who was there representing the community from Smyrna as an officer, but he was also representing the county commission, but we were invited to the Lau Buddhist Temple Annual Community Breakfast, and we enjoyed ourselves. I will tell you, it's interesting, it's seven AM to have fried rice and shrimp for breakfast, but it's pretty good stuff. You have to eat in moderation, it's hard to put that big plate in front of you, and they try to load you up. I think they had enough food at the temple this morning to feed about five hundred people, and there were about twenty of us there, so, but it's always a good time and a great event, and we were joined by other community leaders throughout the county, and a good time was had, so thank you to our friends at the Buddhist temple. I'll leave you with, as I always do, love where you live, we continue to fight that vicious criminal out there on our streets of litter. I've shared many different accolades about the difference in the type of litter and what we can and can't do, but, you know, I just, I hope people will take it serious and love where you live and stop littering our streets and keep Smyrna beautiful. Mayor and Counsel, that is all I have tonight, other than to let you know that man's going out the door because his daughter is in band, at a band concert tonight, and he's going to listen to Alto Sax is what I understand, so appreciate Tom and all he does for the town. That's all I have, Mayor and Counsel.
Jeff?
I just want to introduce a new attorney in our office, Benjamin Gross, sitting over here on the, on the front row, and we're, we're excited about him joining us. He's a longtime Rutherford County and MTSU supporter.
I was going to say, I didn't see an orange tie, so we're all good. Well, we'll not, oh, that's even better, we'll not, ah.
How do you get through the interview without?
I said he was Jeff this year.
Don't get back there, don't get back there and let them corrupt you back there.
The only orange we have has to be accompanied by blue.
Ah, okay, okay. Raquel, anything tonight?
Just welcome Mr. Gross to the team. Congratulations on the police academy graduates, and to piggyback off of what everyone has talked about regarding the budget retreat, it was a long day, I believe it was a very productive day, and I wanted to thank Rex and his team, all the directors and all your employees who worked with you all to put this together. It's, it's all, it was a, a very, I think, productive day, very prosperous, and I appreciate all that you all do to help. all that you all do to help us to be able to steward the, the town's money, the citizens' money, in a way that is beneficial to them. And I hope, as you all have said, Rex's presentation next week, or in two weeks, that the citizens will start to understand better what it is that goes into this budget and how we work to try to do as much as we can for their benefit. So thank you all for all that you've done.
Could you see?
We've talked a lot about shopping local tonight already, but I'm going to take it to the next level and talk about when you shop local, that 68% of the dollars you spend with us stays with us. Now, this is shopping with a local independent business. So, you know, shopping local's great, because we do keep all of the, not all of the money, but the money here in town. But when you shop with a local independent, it exponentially amps up how much money stays in Smyrna. And you can be a 68-percenter, and Jerry's in charge of the stickers down there, so we want to show that you are big-time Smyrna supporter.
How about that's Jerry's birthday?
And then over and above that.
That's too low. Too low. Jerry said we ought to go to 70%.
We're using visual aids tonight, so let's all be kind also. That's all I've got.
Tim?
Yep. I'll add my thanks and appreciation to Brian, the leadership team for the budget this year, and several of you have mentioned it, but I think it's key, it's the employees, the guys that, and the women that are in the field, that are in the offices, that are dedicated to the town, that help us deliver what, what we're able to in Smyrna. I mean, it's no, no coincidence that, that people want to live here, and it's because of you guys here, and for that, I appreciate it. Condolences to Cory Hall. I know Cory, I've met him several times at Thomason-Hutton, just a fine person, and I'm sorry for his loss. Benjamin, welcome. And I do have a slide, and I think it's up there. Yep. The SOAC team is seeking hard-working individuals, at least 18 years of age, to join our team for the summer. Please apply online, and you see the online there, it's at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW. dot governmentjobs, holy cow dot com slash careers slash town of Smyrna, question mark, page equal one.
Don't take holy cow.
I'm going to add holy cow to it. And, you know, SG, I didn't include you in the announcement tonight, so just give me a little pass tonight. That's it.
Because you're being kind.
I'm being kind.
That's something new.
Jerry?
Let's see, a couple of things. Brian and Rex and your group, all of you, I do appreciate what you guys did. It's obvious a lot of work went into it, because it took 11 hours to go through it, so not more time goes into it than that, so very much appreciated. And I know if we don't say it, we all have the goal that we don't raise taxes, and you guys did a great job of making sure that we can kind of keep that, so thank you. The, I've got a birthday coming up. My son Josh is coming up, birthday on Saturday, so happy birthday to Josh. Benjamin, welcome. Good to have you as well. I don't have a slide on it, but Councilwoman Raquel Peoples and myself was able to be on WGNS last Tuesday, wasn't it? And so I want to thank Wayne Blair and Rick Hall for having us. We talked a little bit about Smyrna, and we, we had a good time. It's just, just sit back and kind of discuss and talk about things that happened in the past and what's going on in the future and those types of things, so thanks to them. And I have a slide. Last Monday night, myself, Brian, anybody else? And my wife Patty?
Park staff.
Huh?
Park staff.
Park staff and my wife Patty and my grandson Davis all went to the opening day baseball at Cedar Stone, and, you know, we're very fortunate to have these parks. I mean, you can look at that, and that's just one of those that you show it to people, and I've got a picture of it in my phone, and I'll, I'll show it to them, some people, and they'll say, "Look, you need to bring your tournament here." And I go, "Gosh, I didn't know that was out there." So really a nice place. And then we've got, we've got the parks, it's been, some of the others has been there for a long time. We've got the Todd Lane Park, we've got the Volunteer Park that handles softball, we've got Lee Victory Park. So we've got young men and women playing baseball and softball all over the town, and we're blessed to have a really nice facility to do that in. So my thanks to Mike and his team for just always having these places looking really nice, so that's all I got, Mayor.
Jerry, how many miles of Greenway do we have? Do you know? Mike, is Mike here?
Between Greenway and Trail, it's about 15 miles.
Okay. I figured you would know, because you're on them.
Well, I'm on, I'm on several of them, yeah.
He only goes on the ones with bathrooms. He's got to go.
That's right. That is true.
Are you, are we good?
I'm done.
Okay.
Unless Mark's got something else to say.
That was a question.
Steve?
I'll also add my, I guess, appreciation, Rex, to you and your team, and to Sierra for the budget. Honestly, this was probably the longest single-day budget retreat we've had, but I feel like we had less changes and adjustments. I think the budget that you guys brought us was really strong, really good, and very few recommendations on our behalf, so I think you guys did a great job of putting it together and living within our means. And, you know, specifically, you know, we, we've taken on quite a few projects with the water treatment plant expansion, the Sam Ridley widening, Enon Springs expansion, Genie Lane expansion. We have quite a few coming on, Cedar Stone. Just in the last, you know, four to six years, we've done a lot of infrastructure improvements, and the fact that we've been able to do that while still paying debt down and not having to go to the bond market. The slide that I think was the most interesting to me yesterday was Rex threw a slide up there that said, "We have the ability to go borrow this money if we needed to, but we don't need to." And that's, that's the best possible scenario, is that you don't need to borrow it, but you have the ability to go get it at a very low rate if you needed to. And I think that puts us in financially the best position we can be in. So thank you. Many years of your work has got us here, and we really appreciate that. To all the directors, you guys did a good job putting the budgets together. You know, I, I always joke that, Brian mentioned it yesterday, I look at the number you requested and the number you got, and I always say, "What did we not get that we wanted?" And that number was really kind of small yesterday. Most, most every department, I think, got what they were requesting or what they felt like they needed. And that tells me that you put together a good list, and we were able to fill it, so that's great. I've got a slide for the Fifth Annual Kids Safety Day. The fire department, police department, and Parks, as well as our friends at TriStar Stonecrest, TriStar Centennial, and other community partners. This on Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the SOAC, we'll have Kids Safety Day. It's a free child safety awareness event. The event will feature safety education, free bicycle helmets, entrance into the SOAC and the Smyrna Activity Center, door prizes, and more. The event highlights include inflatables, balloon artists, face painting, indoor rock climbing, car seat safety checks, stranger danger education, animals, bicycles, fire and gun and water safety, and so much more. So Saturday, May 4th, 9:00 to 1:00, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at SOAC, and the best part is, it is a free event. So if you haven't been, gotten to visit our SOAC, bring your kids down, we've got some really cool rock climbing walls, and there's a picture of Mark going down the slide somewhere. I have to find it, but there is a picture of Mark going down the slide there. So yeah, it's a, you get an opportunity to come out May, May 4th. And Mayor, I think that's all I've got.
Great.
Thanks for seeing that picture for showing.
Yeah, I've got it. I've just got to figure out which phone it's on.
Okay. I'll have a slide up here in a second. Did want to say, you know, we've thanked a lot of people for helping us in the budget retreat, but one name I didn't hear, I know we tried to say thank you to Amber if she didn't hear it, but Casey's name. So, you know, behind, did you, okay, I wasn't sure if we mentioned her or not, but Casey's just that behind-the-scenes person that just shows up. She just does it, so. I've had an opportunity, I met Benjamin downstairs about a week or so ago. We have a facility down there where we're allowed to go exercise, and so JJ, I've just met JJ, and I really like that guy. He's a nice guy, so I wanted to make sure I announced tonight, thank you, JJ, for being such a welcome part to the town. I don't know him that well, but he's just an enlightening guy, so I just want to give JJ a little shout out.
JJ gave me a shout out on an email that said I needed to come back down to the workout.
I might have encouraged that, I don't know.
Okay.
I know I pumped about a couple of you.
So don't blame JJ?
No, well, give JJ all the credit you want to give him, so. Yesterday, we were missing somebody. Chief Bill wasn't there, and I know he's still been back and forth with some health things, and just wanted to wish him well tonight, let him know we're thinking about him, and his budget must have gone well. His presentation was in our books, but he wasn't there to be able to give it to us. So Chief Bill, if you're listening, we hope that you're getting well and feeling better. Chief Irwin, thank you again for your, your training, getting our new, new police officers ready to go, and appreciate all, all the work that you guys do from the police department here. I've got a little eight-year-old niece that turned eight on Easter weekend. My little niece, my granddaughter, Lenny Kate. Lennox Catherine, we call her Lenny Kate, so I wanted to wish her a happy eighth birthday. You were having a conflict with a change of schedule that happened today for Every Kid Needs a Hero. It was, Casey reached out to me and told me that your calendar, when they moved the date, was made to where you could not be there. So they've invited me to come speak, and, and I'm looking forward to that. Every Kid Needs a Hero is an event, it's an organization by the Every Kid Is a Hero Foundation, and the foundation works alongside school districts to celebrate the students of special education classrooms. So I'm looking forward to going and reminding these, these young students what an amazing gift they are to our community, and they do comic book kind of stuff for them. They make them all their own superhero.
They create their own personal comic book.
Yeah.
And so even if they have medical devices that they have to use or anything like that, they include those in the comic book.
Right.
So it's a comic book about that particular kid.
Yeah, I know everybody here's invited, but if you can make it, but I'm looking forward to speaking to that group for a few minutes on Friday. So last thing I think I have was a slide. So this past week, Champy's Restaurant over in Smyrna, right next to Home Depot, opened the store officially. They've been open for a few weeks, but they opened the store officially with a ribbon cut, and a few of us were able to be there, Brian and Todd. Todd always shows up when there's chicken, so Todd was there, Jerry and Heather was there doing the paparazzi work for us, so she's not in the pictures, I don't think, but Champy's invites you, TJ Goon and his family. His family owned and operated, they've got a fantastic thing going over there, and if you haven't been, I would suggest you go over and try some of their food, and it's a good bunch of people, but I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. So I have two slides tonight. Our first one is Wild Wednesdays are back just in time for April. April 3rd and 17th, the staff will be introducing guests to various aquatic environments and their habitats, so learn about these animals and build to, that are built to live either in freshwater or saltwater habitats, and how they've come to be popular pets among people. April 10th and 24th, guests are invited to join SOAC staff to explore the occurrence of the visual illusion called afterimage. Not sure what that is. Learn all there is about afterimages and what causes us to see them, and these programs will be held at the SOAC and start at 4:30 PM and are open to all ages and are free of charge, but we do suggest that you register through Community Pass, so we know how many people will be present. And then the National DEA Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, April 27th. The Prevention Coalition for Success is partnering with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for a drug takeback event at the Smyrna Police Department. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and we encourage our citizens to safely and anonymously drop off unused and expired medication for proper disposal. Saturday, April 27th, 10 to 2, Smyrna Police Department, which is at 400 Enon Springs Road East here in Smyrna. Acceptable items are tablets, capsules, patches. Items that are not accepted are needles, syringes, and liquids. So those are my slides tonight. I want to thank the seniors for coming out tonight. We enjoyed getting to see them. If it's a group that you're interested in becoming involved in, I am sure they would love to have you, and they are an active group, and I know that you'll have a good time. Steve?
If I go back, I'm a little bit of a nerd when it comes to numbers, and I ran some quick numbers on the comptroller site related to property taxes, and, you know, we like to say that we're second in Rutherford County, and that's, that's admirable. However, that's just...
Second lowest.
Second lowest, right. That's, that's just four or five cities, right? So to give you a little more perspective, there's 305 municipalities in the state of Tennessee, and we are 12th out of 305 in population. But our tax rate, we are 61st out of 305 in tax rate. That means there's 244 municipalities out of the 305 that have a higher tax rate than us. That says a lot. If, being the top 12, we ought to be in the top tax rates, too, and we're not. We're way down the list. If you throw in the county taxes, a lot of people like to be at Rutherford County and talk about their tax rate. Even if you throw in Rutherford County's tax, we're still in the top 37%. They're 63% of the towns. I got that number here, too. 157th, there's 424 municipalities and counties together, and we're 157 out of those. So our, our tax rate is low in the town of Smyrna, but even though Rutherford County keeps having to raise the rate, overall in the state of Tennessee, we're still in the top third or lowest third tax rates in the whole state. And that, that really says a lot when you consider all of the rural areas that still exist in Tennessee.
Great. Okay, anything else tonight?
One other thing, real quick, Mayor. One of our police officers will be celebrating a birthday this Friday. I think he's in the room, so just wanted to point out that maybe some folks are getting a little older.
I think I saw him on my list, so.
63.
A mistake? Oh, okay, okay. Well, if there is nothing else to come before this board tonight, then we are adjourned.